Councilman Gibson, is he an earshot? I think he is. Very good. Wonderful. Yeah, The Water Boy, that's a great movie. By Adam Sandler. Okay, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Could all please rise? Pastor CJ Hill from the United Methodist Church will lead us in prayer this morning. Good morning, how are you?
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let us pray. Lord of all creation, we've gathered to do the business of our beautiful city. Grant us wisdom and discernment, courage in action, and grace to walk humbly together into the future. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much. Councilman Slata, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Be the honor, Mayor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Caramba.
Here.
Councilman DeWitt.
Here.
Councilman Slata.
Here.
Mayor Simmons.
Here.
Councilman O'Flynn.
Here.
Councilman Gibson.
Here.
Councilman Forbes.
Here.
Well, good morning, everybody. How are you?
Good morning, Mayor. Happy birthday, Peter.
Yeah, well, thank you very much. And Councilman Slata's last meeting with us today after eight great years on the City Council, so very special day here.
Thank you.
Absolutely. And we're gonna start with a public comment on agenda items. Members of the public that would like to speak on agenda items, please come forward. Good morning, Councilwoman.
Good morning, Mayor and City Council. First of all, Councilman Slata, I want to thank you for your eight years of service to our city and, of course, your service to our country, being in the Air Force as one of the founding -- members founding the Veterans Advisory Board. You did an exemplary job honoring and serving our veterans in this community. You elevated the beautiful events we had. You were particularly sensitive to those who live here in our community who are veterans, who need our guiding care and love. And I just want to thank you for that. Also, I agreed with most of the stuff you voted on, the big questions before the city. I agree that you did the right thing in the interest of our city. Eh, there's one vote, you know what it is. That I wasn't so big on. But I love you nonetheless. And you have served with distinction and honor, and I want to thank you, sir.
Thank you very much, Martha.
Yeah, that wasn't on the agenda, but, okay. And we'll get to some more later. Anyhow, the city managers and city attorneys' negotiation for contract, I want to -- I hear some scuttlebutt that we might think about outsourcing the city attorney. I think this is a fiscally irresponsible thing to do. Let me tell you what the city charter says. "Here shall be a city attorney who shall be a member of the Florida bar in good standing, appointed by the council, who may represent the city in all legal proceedings and shall perform all other duties as assigned by the council." So it's up to you. "The council may remove the city attorney for any reasons by a majority vote of a total member. The city attorney shall serve as chief legal advisor to the council and all city departments, offices, and agencies." If you outsourced that, that's a lot of billable hours. And I recommend that you look to the city of Naples for what their legal fees are, not just the one, the city attorney, but for everything that they do under their legal. It is through the roof. And one of the things that happens is these billable hours go to the firm that the city attorney works with, and it's crazy. So look at their lawsuits, all that kind of stuff. We're very fortunate in that we have a good practice of using the Florida League of Cities Municipal Legal Fund. Is that what it's called, Audrey?
Legal Insurance.
Legal Insurance. Man, they've done a lot for us for a little bit of money, and they've got great attorneys. You've also gone to outside counsel when need be. Unfortunately, you know, the prior council kind of left some things that are real expensive in your hands, and you've made some decisions yourself, but that's on counsel. You know, the city attorney goes by your direction, and if you're clear and concise and firm, I believe your city attorney will do what you guys direct her to do, or him, whichever you might choose to do. But I think going outsourcing legal counsel, big mistake for our city. Plus, the city attorney's in the charter, though. Okay, and that's all I have to say about that. There was something else that was on your agenda, but also, our city manager has applied for another job somewhere in the course of the last year in another city. It might be that he wants to move on, I don't know. I haven't talked to him about it, but you might want to give him six months to, you know, make up his mind about what he wants to do. So, thank you.
Thank you, Martha. Good morning, Kathy.
Well, good morning, Stephen. Boo hoo. I'll forgive you for flying for Delta. You know Pan Am was better. All right. On consent agenda, item B, Jason Zacharino. He is such a gem out there at Nature Place. I mean, that's a given, but I just wanted to mention that. And about celebrate Benita, I'll talk about that later in public comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Good morning, Dawn.
Good morning. I'm here for myself and as a board member of the Benita Beach Association, and I'm here for item eight. I would like to suggest that council review the city charter under section 41 for city attorney. Was the city attorney appointed by this council?
Mm-hmm.
By this council?
No, not this council.
Okay. A city attorney's duty is not to introduce an ordinance. Under section 29B of the charter, it states that an ordinance may be introduced by any member at any regular or special meeting of the council. Although a council attorney -- although a city attorney keeps an eye on state legislation, a city attorney is not elected and should not be recommending the city or Lee County to consider an ordinance to permit customary use. A city attorney should inform council that you do not permit customary use, you have to approve customary use, parcel by parcel, use by use, in a court of law. A city attorney should offer council all of the facts in an easy-to-understand format. The state website where the proposed legislation that is attached to a recent memo is located -- where it is located also offers the various vote totals on Bill 631. More importantly, the summary analysis of the Civil Justice and Claims Committee and the Judiciary Committee. This very important summary of B-631 has analysis that you did not receive. I have a copy for each of you, and I will take a moment to read just a few facts. The Fifth District Court of Appeals has held, "Acquisition of rights by one in the lands of another based on possession or use is not favored in the law, and the acquisition of such rights will be restricted. Any doubts as to the creation of the right must be resolved in favor of the owner." Notably, the Fifth DCA has also held that a customary use determination requires the court to ascertain in each case the degree of customary and ancient use the beach has been subjected to. Under Florida law, customary use only requires the courts to ascertain in each case the degree of customary and ancient use the beach has been subjected to. That's under Reynolds and County of Volusia. Thus, absent a specific lawsuit establishing the extent and nature of customary use, the public is relegated back to the area below the mean high water line. Therefore, State Senator Kathleen Passadomo, a Republican from Naples, and Katie Edwards from Miami, a Democrat, are only asking for legislation that mirrors prior Supreme Court decisions. If a local government wants to take private property for public use through the customary use doctrine, then they need to go through the courts. A city attorney should try to protect council from lawsuits and should not push an agenda. Thank you for your time and your service for all the residents of the city, and if you need more factual evidence, you know where to find it. Happy birthday, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Other members of the public that would like to speak?
Good morning, Mr. Mayor and Council. I'm not here about any agenda item. I just want to remind you about IBE and the flooding that we -- problems that we have back there. So, thank you, have a good day. Happy birthday.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Other members of the public that would like to speak? Going, going, gone. Okay, seeing none, we're gonna move on to the consent agenda. Counsel, what's your pleasure on the consent agenda?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion to approve. There's a second. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman DeWitt.
Aye.
Councilman Slata.
Aye.
Mayor Simmons.
Aye.
Councilman O'Flynn.
Aye.
Councilman Gibson.
Aye.
Councilman Forbes.
Aye.
Councilwoman Caramba.
Aye.
Okay, we're gonna move on to proclamations and presentations. Do we have Michael Guerrero in the House? All right, please come forward. That's a good attitude. And if you did, nobody would care, right? That's not true. Okay, very good. Very good. This is an award from the city of Benita Springs for five years of service presented to Michael Guerrero. As of the seventh day of February 2018, an appreciation and recognition for five years of public service to the city of Benita Springs, Florida. Signed, Mayor Peter Simmons and City Manager Carl Schwing. Congratulations, and thank you for everything you do for Benita Springs.
Good morning, again. Like I said, definitely an interesting time here in Benita, everybody transitioning. Happy birthday to you and you, your age group. Definitely, our department's taken, you know, quite the beating. New staff members coming on, hoping to see what it has for us in the future. And just like to thank everybody that's helped me along the way, and just thankful to have this.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. And I think Michael will do a picture, Michael? If that's all right? Okay. If we could have the ladies, please, from women's group, please. Believing in Girls Month, PACE. I apologize, I knew I could spit it out. Sometimes it's obvious at the top of these, and sometimes it isn't. I apologize. Good morning.
Happy birthday, Keith.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
Hi, Meg, how are you? Nice to see you. Hello? Hi? How are you? Play basketball? Nice. So did my sister-in-law. She, yeah, yeah. Well, welcome, and we're glad to have you. We know you weren't able to make it at one of our past meetings, but Martha? Thank you. This is a proclamation of believing in Girls Month, whereas March is Women's History Month in the United States, a time when our nation reflects on the valuable contributions women make to our society, and whereas the young women of Florida are considered to be tomorrow's leaders, and whereas it is very important that we provide young women access to the resources and opportunities they need to reach their full potential, and whereas the PACE Center for Girls is instrumental in helping promote a better future through education, counseling, training, and advocacy in collaboration with Florida's Department of Children and Families, Department of Education, and Department of Juvenile Justice, and whereas PACE Center for Girls, Lee County reports a 95 success rate, percent success rate, of keeping girls out of the criminal justice system and improving the academic success of 96 percent of students. Phenomenal. Whereas women are dynamic individual contributors to society, and whereas March 13th is the 10th anniversary of the Grand Dame's Tea and PACE Center for Girls of Lee County, we'll be honoring four local women for their lifelong impact in business, philanthropy, and community engagement, and promoting awareness of the services provided by PACE Center for Girls of Lee County. Now, therefore, I, Peter Simmons, do hereby proclaim the month of March 2018 as believing in Girls Month in Benita Springs, and urge all residents to engage in the Grand Dame's Tea to honor the female spirit and promote the potential of all girls and women. Signed, Mayor Peter Simmons, March 7th, 2018. Thank you very much. Congratulations. Thank you. Would you like to say your words?
I'm very interested in PACE because of their success rate. And I've been going up to Fort Myers for all the events, but now we're coming to Benita with an event April 10th, and the Center for the Arts, of which I'll be chairman next week, is going to sponsor the event Fashion with Passion, I think it is, or Meets Passion. Meets, not with. And we would like all of you to know about it and to support it. PACE is someone, something, really, that has the most success rate, close to Guadalupe Center, but I really think here it has more than Guadalupe, and that's saying something. So, I'm very glad that you honored.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Meg?
Yes, first of all, happy birthday, Mr. Mayor. I just want to thank the council for all of their service, and I just want to ditto what, you may not know this, but Jackie McCurdy is a reigning grand dame. And yes, thank you. She, well earned, absolutely. So, from the bottom of our hearts, we want to thank you for your support, and we look forward to having our first event at the Arts Center on April the 10th. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
She's our player, you know, she's the young one.
Very much. Thank you very much. There you go.
Thanks.
Where'd you play?
Thank you.
I played at the baseball.
Nice.
Yes. Thank you so much for everything.
Yes, yes, we do.
Oh, picture.
Oh, that's okay. There's no hurry, but whenever you're ready.
Thank you so much. Very much.
Thank you, Jackie.
Thank you very much.
Carol Green, sir.
Well, once again, thank you, Michael, and thank you for the great work that PACE does. Glad to have you with us here today. We're now going to move on to item C, which is a presentation by Carol Green with Capital Strategies for this year's legislative session. Welcome.
Good morning.
I brought Ashley because she has all the facts. Anyway, thank you so much. You know, it's, we've been with you all for a long time now, and I've enjoyed a wonderful opportunity to represent you and come every year, sometimes two and three times a year to visit with you, and some of you come and visit with us, which is always fun, too. Today's probably not my most favorite day to be here, like so many of the others have been, so many of the celebrations that we've had and times that we've had to share with each other. However, at the same time, I'm really happy to be here because I'm happy to be back with my home, my friends, you know, back home, and share a little bit about some of the things that went on. I'll start with some of the things that I perceived, and then Ashley's gonna talk a little bit about policy and some of the stuff that happened there, and then obviously we'll be open for questions. Every year, session takes on a new face. Every session is different. This session is probably the hardest one I've ever had unless you want to look back to the times of Terri Schiavo, and I don't know how many of you remember that. I remember that very well. But many of us who lived through that would tell you that this one, this one may have been even a little worse in some ways. But that being said, we started session early this year, in January. January sessions are always a little hard, not just because it's really cold up there, but because of the fact that, you know, you hit the holidays and then you really hit the ground running, and things happen very quickly. And they did this year, too, but in a normal way, other than things were moving a little faster than usual. For instance, the budget stuff kind of shut down about a week before anybody expected. It was kind of like, oh, no, we have another week, or we have a couple more weeks, but then it was like, no, we don't. But then February 14th happened, and then everything changed. The whole, everybody's world changed, really, if you want to take it into a grander scale in some ways. I remember February 14th very well, Mr. Mayor. As you, as I wish you a happy birthday today, February 14th was my birthday.
Thank you.
And so I was having a good day. Things were kind of going right, and everything seemed like, okay, everything's in place, we got things moving right. And then that happened, and the town turned upside down, not just the legislature, but the town. We had thousands of children, I mean, they're young adults descend on the town. I have lots of video. I stood out in the courtyard with them to talk to some of them, went upstairs to the chamber level to listen to them screaming and crying and doing everything they could to act out. Became very, very difficult times for everyone, and everything shut down. All of a sudden, the temper of medium meetings changed. Everything changed. They started having bills die pretty quickly then, literally die, and Ashley's gonna speak to that. And all of a sudden, everyone says, it doesn't matter what happened six months ago or three months ago, this is what's happening now, and it's happening to our children, to our young adults and our children. And it's pretty hard for anybody probably here in the room, especially those of us of a certain age, to not bleed for our children. So consequently, there were things that happened that became out of our control, completely out of our control. And I'm going to let Ashley talk a little bit about policy now, and then we'll come back and start addressing questions about anything that you would like to talk about.
Okay, great. Thanks, Carol.
Hi, everyone.
Welcome.
Thank you. Happy birthday. I, to be honest, my report is very short. I can probably do it in a minute. As you know, when you see your reports, it's, they're usually 42 pages long, there's a lot of bills that we track, and this year, pretty much everything died. Fracking died. Regulation of vacation rentals died. The municipal elections bill that we were really worried about, thank goodness, died. We had a tree trimming regulation bill that exempt things to the state died. Gaming died. Reporting of permits and inspection fees died. There were only, out of all the bills that we tracked, and there's about 100, maybe a little bit more, only seven bills passed that we were watching. Two of them are cleanup bills. It's, one's just getting rid of a council that doesn't really exist anymore. One's just cleaning up some statue in the DRI process. So that leaves just a couple, a handful of bills. One of them was a resign-to-run bill that we were watching, and basically what it does is, it gets in line local and state officials that want to run for federal office. If your term is going to overlap, you need to resign 10 days before qualifying date. That's in line with if a local official was gonna run for state. So it's really just getting that federal candidacy in line with everything else. The other thing that they passed was an exemption and confidentiality of local government, school districts' fire safety policy. So you can meet about that, and it doesn't have to be in the sunshine for safety purposes and for public records. That passed. Like I said, there was a DRI bill, that's cleanup language. There was another bill that requires counties and municipalities to put in their recyclable contracts, language in there about contamination of recyclable materials. That passed. And other than that, that's it. That's all that passed. We took, a lot of our time, honestly, this year was spent on defense, specifically the municipal elections and requiring those to be done, what was it, August, I believe, changing their dates. So the election that you just had, you wouldn't have been able to do that. They were cracking down on those dates to make it more, in their, in their words, universal across the state for local, first city and county elections. That was a huge one that we fought. Also, all the ethics bills died, including bills on the sexual harassment that died in the last few hours of session. The bill on local government fiscal reporting, there was a lot of requirements that were, they were making local governments do, that died. And the other one was ethics reform for local governments. That all died. Those were huge packages that passed the House pretty early on, and those all died in the final hour. So, that's it online. If you guys have questions, feel free to ask, but that's.
Yeah, Ashley?
Yes, sir.
What was the issue with sexual harassment?
Oh, in the legislature, there were some incidences this year of legislators who had relationships that were not appropriate, specifically a senator that was out of office, removed from office. And then there were senators who had relationships. So they were.
With other senators.
With other senators. So they put together a package that dealt with how to deal with sexual harassment, training, and putting certain procedures in place, and that was poised to actually pass, and then it literally died, I want to say, on Thursday and Friday. They extended session to Sunday, but I believe it died that Thursday or Friday before session ended.
That's my question, why did it die, you know?
We don't know.
Okay. I can read between the lines.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, no, we'll start. Amy, do you have questions or comments?
No, I, of course, you, we were very interested in the appropriations issues.
Right.
And we understand, and this is not at all a criticism to those sponsors that they had for our bills, but if we could just, did any appropriation bills pass, and, you know, basically, where do we go from here?
Yep, then that's where we come back, to me. But we wanted to, yeah. Anyway, should I just start with that, Mr. Mayor, and I can tell you how, kind of how where the breakdown of some of the dollars went to? There, and let me preface my comments by saying, I know that Councilman DeWitt, Councilman Forbes, and the mayor and I have had some conversations, and obviously, they've been with me a few times in Tallahassee to help with our efforts up there. And again, everything changed. But we've had an opportunity to look at everything. There are some things that I would tell you we may want to address when we get into the, what we call into the weeds or into the details on individual basis, as opposed to at a public forum, which we're more than glad to make plenty of time to do that. But I will give you the essence of where the breakdown happened. We were, we were in place in the budget by the senator, by Senator Passadomo, with the, with the assistance of Senator Galvano. We don't want to lose sight of that, too, who will be our incoming president and who, I think, has some special interest here in Benita Springs because his brother lives here, and his mother actually lives in Lee County, been a good friend for, of us and for us for a long time. So we were there and actually in a position to be what they call in play. So we were really happy about that. The House knew that, that was one of the things that we had worked with them on, you know, we'd worked with them on making sure that, and I know Carl and his team worked diligently to make sure that anything that came up, any, any problem that came up got solved every time. And by getting it into this, the House or into the Senate budget, it was, our projects were in play. So we knew that going into conference, we'd be okay. We were also told that there was a potential for a pot of money that would be a hurricane referenced pot of money. Again, when September, well, excuse me, when February 14th happened, that took $400 million out of the budget right then. $400 million automatically went to the Parkland School issues to be shared throughout the state. So that's a big chunk of money. Another thing that happened that's very interesting, too, is that we do have lawsuits going on in regards to Amendment 1, you'll remember, which is the Florida Forever moneys. That was a huge issue for the Senate, for Senator Bradley and for Senator Negron, President Negron. They took a little over $100 million and took that off the table, too, and that would have been. over a hundred million and took that off the table, too. And that would have been the pots of money that we'd be looking at for our traditional water projects, which this was lumped into water projects. So that hundred million, million gone, 400 million gone. Higher education was a huge winner this year. So that left your water projects with about $26 million to share across the entire state. So that, that creates a lot of concern, which was shared with me, with Kathleen, with Senator Pasadomo. Our new delegation chair is Mr. Eagle, Representative Eagle, who actually called me again yesterday to check in with what, what we needed, et cetera. They're both very concerned, both Senator Pasadomo's called me, too, and Representative Eagle has called me, to share with us what they need to do to help us. I mean, they, they really want to be engaged to help because they understand what we went through. And they understand that they had their hands tied because when it actually came down to it, there was the 26 million was all they had. Now, putting that into perspective, okay, you got the 400 million, you got the 100 million, you got the higher education pot, you got the, well, the presiding officers both have pots of money that they have at the very end to help fix problems. So at the very end and that last, and I know that the mayor specifically had said, call me, I will be there in a minute. And as I shared with him on the phone, this is out of our control. This is totally out of our control. There is, there, I mean, our hands are completely tied in this. We have to rely on our team.
And I'll just add on the extra pots of money. So each presiding officer has a pot of money. And it's called supplemental funding. And those lists do not come out until literally the last day of conference. Here's your list. Goodbye, walk away, that's it. It's all done behind closed doors. And I will say that on the House side, most of Speaker Corcoran's money was put in charter school funding.
Thirty million dollars.
Thirty million dollars. So just, I don't think that was all supplemental, but he funded it 30 million total. But just to put in perspective, most of his money went to charter schools.
So, so those are, those are the bigger picture issues that we had to be faced with. We're glad to address any other questions that you might have. Those that we feel like we should not do, we, again, we're glad to sit down with you and give you as much time as you want. However, I don't want to leave the podium without having an opportunity to talk a little bit about some of the things that we look at as they go forward. And I don't mean go forward a year from now. I mean, go forward now. Because I think that there are some opportunities that we have that we need to investigate some time and effort into, and certainly want to do that. But again, if there's questions about anything that I have, that we've just told you, we're glad to address that. If not, we'll start into some of the other things and then whatever you need.
Greg?
No, I just want to thank you. I know that you guys worked diligently trying to get all our points across. Like I said, myself, the mayor, and Councilman Forbes went up there. So we know it's not from a lack of trying. It's just, as their hands were tied, I think our hands got tied.
Yeah, it was, yeah. Well, my foot was tied, as you remember. Kidding.
Steve?
Carol, thank you. Always. You've done a wonderful job.
Thanks, Steve. Peter?
Yeah, I'm good.
Mike?
Just had one question on the municipal election bill that died. Ours is tied to the primary, but is it because we have one that doesn't like this one that just passed, there isn't a primary to go along with it? Is that what the holdup for us is, anyway?
It died.
It died.
Well, yeah, I know, but why, why did we not like the bill? Because I thought it said as long as it was in March, along with the primary.
I, I think a lot of that just comes down to the basics of the local control home rule. And home ru, and, and actually, the home rule issues that came up this year, which there were many, again, they're, they're, they didn't fare well. And I, that's where we really were at with that.
But would that have precluded us from having the election that just passed? Because it is March, like it said, but.
I, I don't, it wouldn't have precluded that one because of the fact that it was, it's, it, well, it's a moot point because it wasn't signed into law. But once it got signed into law, so obviously, it wouldn't have been signed into law yet either because we're still, the governor's still got to the end of the month, I think, on almost everything that's sitting on his desk. So it wouldn't have gotten signed. So that election would have gone forward. So your new councilwoman would have. And unfortunately, you know, Councilman Slak, yeah, is moving on.
Hey, thanks.
Thanks. Fred?
Yeah, I've, I've got a question and a observation. What about, I know Jacksonville was going to get 95, and then they got cut to about 70. Wasn't that somewhat related to water, too?
The St. John River piece is what you're talking about. They had, they had a huge request in, but they, they got cut further than that. They got almost, I mean, compared to what they were asking for, they got almost nothing. And I did look that up, and I apologize because you and I had talked about that, that specific. And let me see if I have my note on that here. And I may not. If I don't, I'll get back to you on that. But no, we, yeah, because you and I had talked about that. And no, they didn't, they didn't even come close.
What they asked for.
They, what they, that's what they asked for, but they didn't even come close. I, we, I have, and Ashley, we, we have looked through, there were 44, it ended up with that 26 million, there were 44 projects. You got everything all, a lot of those that I've looked at are, are the septic sewer issues. That's a, that's a huge issue for our state. You all know that.
Yeah.
And a lot of those were that. A lot of them, too, were Phase Two and Phase Three and Phase Four projects. So there's no, when you start looking through there, do I find anything in there that's just strictly like a hurricane issue? Boy, it's, if, I mean, most of them are, are really not. There's some that looks like it could be a dredging issue. But usually, the dredging is associated with, and, and the water quality is associated with what they're looking at there, and the water quality issues, but.
Usually, those are in beach management, anyway.
Right. So, I mean, I've, I've had my hands on, out of the 44, I think I have done the research and, and gone into the weeds on probably about 35 of them so far. To see, I mean, I'm like you. I want to know. I mean, you know, we, we're problem solvers. We're, we're fighters, you know, and, and I'm, I want to know, too. And I can tell you that that's, there's not like a big thing that says, oh, yeah, and we took care of the hurricane for Ocala, you know?
No, I'm, I'm aware that the other people that actually were worse hit than we were got very little. But I, I would say this. I think if we're going to go in, in the coming year, especially unless we have another hurricane, God forbid, in here, or if somebody else has one, they'll be the number one push. I know that we were told by Rodriguez, Fithzenhagen, Rommel, at least her, I think Caldwell, that we need to, if we want to seriously be considered, we got to have 50% match. And now, if we had it this year, I don't know that we'd have got it. But we would have, we would have hung in there a little better, at least until the, the shooting hit, which was a horrific thing. But that's my observation. And the thing that you got to be aware of, which I didn't realize till this came up, and that is that, for the most part, you don't need your, that money until the following fiscal year. Had we been successful this year, we wouldn't have had to have that local match. So I think that's something we all need to keep in mind for the next round. I'm sure there will be one, because I don't give up. And I know the mayor doesn't. I know Councilman O'Flynn, DeWitt doesn't give up, Amy, Mike, so. But I think we, I think we have to realize that. And probably the other thing, which goes to something that Councilman O'Flynn said the last time, we probably need to pick two to three of our hardest ones and come up with realistic numbers and put in that local match. And it's a gamble because probably we won't get them all approved, anyway. So that's my thought, for whatever it's worth.
Mr. Mayor, can I make a comment?
Let me say this.
Sure.
You, you worked as hard as you could work. In fact, you wore me out, dragging me around to all the, all those corridors and up and downstairs and all that. Wish I'd have had that walk meter on.
Councilman, I can, I can tell you, we, we have proudly represented this city for a very, very, very long time. I ran the legislation for the referendum for this city. I love this city. I've watched it grow, too. I was just sharing with Councilman Gibson, I, just last week, I took a drive down Old Forty-One, which I hadn't done for a while, just to remind myself. And it has changed a lot over the years. We don't give up either. That's why, in our sorrow or our grief, or whatever you want to call it, that we went through, we're, we're going through this, too, just like you, and going, where, what, how, why?
And we're, I mean, I have to just say, because I can't stop myself, and you're probably going to kick me, but we are angry about what happened. I mean, we're not sitting back thinking, oh, well, there's next year. I mean, we were mad. I was here. I, the woman that came up and talked about the flooding, I saw it. I was there. I saw people in their kayaks, kayaking their stuff out of their homes to their friends on the side of the road, in their cars, to get all their possessions. I was here. I saw it all. My husband volunteered. He was out handing out water. We were here. So I'm local, and I know what happened, and it makes me angry. And again, I am more than happy to talk about this with all of you individually, to get into more detail, because I actually think that's very important, to know some more to the story. And her and I are fighters, and we are just looking for solutions, like with Florida Forever. How can we get some of that money to help with some of this? So just so you know, we are not complacent about what happened. We are, I'm actually pretty angry about what happened. And when Carol says this is one of the worst sessions we've had, it is. And it's because of this.
The other thing that I would just, excuse me.
I just had one other.
Well, I, yeah, and I'll, then I'll finish with what I want to say.
No, go ahead.
Well, well, I, that, it was just really, it really is a difficult situation, because whenever you are problem solvers or people that do that, when you, when you take something and you take it out of your hands.
Yeah, we took it as lo, as far as we were allowed to take it.
That's the, you know, when you get, and, and to your point about this, every time there was a problem put in front of us that we knew what it was, that, that it wasn't subterfuge, that we knew what it was, your staff.
We fixed it with your staff.
Your, your staff helped us fix it. We backed the money off. We got the match we needed. We got all of those things done. So that's when you get really frustrated because you put all of the effort in. But I can tell you, and I, and I'm sorry, I just have, there's a lot of stuff that, in that water project thing, that had zero match. Just saying.
Just one thing I'd like, not for today.
Sure.
At some point, is, when you take some of the projects, like Billy's Creek or the Sanibel Project, or the Fort Myers Beach Project, or the ones in Fort Myers, I'd appreciate a, however you want to do it, not here, what the analysis is of.
Absolutely.
You know, why, and we know who the sponsors were, Cape Coral Project, Melina, over a million dollars. How that money, in your best analysis.
Absolutely.
We have it.
We have it for you.
We, we, we talked about it.
Not for now.
First thing we looked at.
Yeah, okay.
But we have it. And, you know, and we're more than glad to make time at your convenience.
Got it.
I got all summer. I'll come and visit with you.
Yeah, no, and I'd like to drill down a little bit.
Sure.
When we, when Fred and I went up, and Greg was there, too, in December, we had these meetings, and, you know, we were told about a match, and match, match, match. Made me think of the match game. I heard the word match so often, right? And then we got back up in January, and everybody said, is your 50% match in place? Well, no, our match was 5%, and it was 10%, and it was 15%. And it didn't matter where we were. I mean, I was seeing representatives one night with dinner, with Representative Rommel and Donalds, that I didn't even know, had no idea. But a bunch of them were together. And, and, oh, hi, this is Mayor Simmons. And, you know, introductions and, hi, nice to meet you. How you doing? Great. And then, you know, two sentences later, did you have your 50% match in place? I didn't even know these people, right? And it, and as Fred said, every single person in the local delegation said it. It was literally the first thing out of their mouth. People that I didn't even know, legislators from all parts of the state, said the same thing. So where was the disconnect from our meetings in December, making it clear that the match needed to be in place, with a portion of the match being in place, but not to the level that the legislators were looking at it, or looking for?
We're glad to share that with you. I can tell you that when that message got delivered, and we started working on it, that, that we worked as hard as we could to get as far as we could, along with the fact that there are other facts, other med, to my knowledge, there are other mitigating facts, including the fact that we had already put $12 million forward, which was shared with all of our folks. We've already spent our money. We spent it upfront, you know? And so because of the fact we had spent that much money upfront, and because of the fact that, I know that whenever I had an opportunity to meet with some of the folks, too, including Chairman Al Britton, specifically.
Who chairs the water committee.
Who chairs the water committee. He said that wasn't an issue.
The match was not an issue.
He told me that personally. And that was not the issue, and that wasn't.
I thought we had a local member that said that as well.
We did. We did. Representative Fithzenhagen also shared that, too. Where did the breakdown come? The breakdown came somewhere between what was being rumored around to getting it delivered to me.
And there's, like Carol said, there are projects in the budget that have zero match.
Quite a few of them.
Zero. And it's not just one or two.
And they're not just small.
Right.
So I'm telling, I, I'm telling you, I'm, Mr. Mayor, I'm more than glad to have that conversation with you.
I think we should have it.
And, you know, in more detail, if you would like. More than glad to do that.
Sure. Fred?
Well, I, I want to clarify one thing. I didn't know that we needed to have 50%. I knew that we had to have a match shown December the fourth and fifth. The 50%, when I first heard that as a, a really, that's the number you really need, was more like, what was the weekend that, before we went up to see him the second time?
Yeah, it was in January.
Late January. So that's what, and, and in all honesty, it was probably too late, whatever. I'm not even sure when we came up with a 15% that all of them really, even though they got the paperwork, I think, between the shooting and other things, a lot of them, didn't see it because it wasn't in the original paperwork, probably.
But, but if I might.
Yeah.
I can address that, too, because of the fact that, that when we got the paperwork finished to where we made the changes, and I know the staff had worked all weekend to do that, I went specifically to the appropriations room with, with Mr. Rodriguez's aide, James Mullins, who you all know. By then, Mr. Rodriguez was out for a while and, because of the passing of his father. But James and I went there specifically for me to file that all with the appropriations staff. They would not let me behind the closed door. They let James behind the closed door. I'm just, want you to understand, we took it as far as we could before they took it out of our hands.
Right.
Now, decisions get made, and the people who make those decisions may have to address some of that. Because when you can't get behind the door, you can't get behind the door. And so some things are just made that way. Now, I know that you will have more questions, and we're more than glad to drill down in any way you would like with that. And you probably will have an opportunity to talk to Mr. Eagle and Ms. Pasadomo, too, because.
And both of them were a big help.
Both of them were a big, big help, and both of them were behind.
And Representative Rommel.
And Representative Rommel.
Yeah.
Both of them were behind closed doors. One of the, there, there were a couple other things that went along with that explanation from my standpoint, and from what we did. And that is, not only did we jump through the hoops to get there and tell them our story, which are, they got our story. They got it. You guys were there. You gave them our story. You gave them and testified our story. I don't know how you plan ahead for natural disasters, really, other than having the rainy day fund that you had that you spent. I don't know how you do that. And that was another part of that. If you're doing a Phase Two or Phase Three or a Phase Four project, yeah, you, you got money. We had money for Pine Lake Preserve. It never got hurt either, by the way. But, but there was match there. And it didn't, I, so, you know, I don't, I'd like to say that that would have changed everything. I, I'm not sure I know that for a fact. I, I, you know. I think that the fact that you don't, you know, that it was a natural disaster, yes, we've already spent our 12 million. Yes, we did find, we did find match. And yes, we did, we did make the changes as we went forward so that we were able to. we did, we did make the changes as we went forward, so that we were able to drill down into, this is what we really, really need.
Fred?
First of all, my comments were not meant to be discouraging to you or your assistant. I just said, my opinion is based on what we learned.
Sure.
Especially if, because our hurricane's one-year-old, when we go in next time, we got to go with that 50% if we want a real fighting chance. Because something else will be big, I don't know what it may be, I hope it's another shooting, but something else will be hot topic this coming year.
Absolutely. Yes, sir. I don't know if I answered your question, Mr. Mayor.
On that municipal election, see, our election is tied to the presidential primary, and that only happens every four years. So, I would think that we would be in the August primary, and the August primary still occurs even in the presidential, so that's what they were trying to push everybody into.
Yeah, I do too. Yeah, I do too.
Greg, did you have something else, or were you?
I just wanted to make the comment, and Carol kind of touched on it. I just don't understand how the legislature expects us to have a 50% match on something we don't know that we need because of a natural disaster like a hurricane. I mean, had we known that we were, had problems with the drainage, with the river, with whatever else we had, it would have been a different story. But to expect us to do the proverbial Rob Peter to pay Paul, to have a 50% match on something that just popped up after the budget's already been set, I just think it's unfair and unjust.
Yeah. No, it was one of these things where, and we've gone through it, but to a person, and it didn't matter, like I said, legislators that I knew, and legislators that I didn't know, to a T, did you have that 50% match in initially? And then when we didn't have it in initially, and we didn't make the first round of cuts, so to speak, in the House, we were twisting in the wind, and then we were given a lifeline by Senator Pasadomo in the Senate, is, you know, kind of the easiest way that I saw, that I heard, despite all the conversations, that's what I saw and what I heard, so.
I think it's good to do these postmortems, so we can understand if we could have done anything better, and I'm sure that's a natural process that you're going through, and I appreciate all the effort that was done. I think we, what we really need is not only to understand what happened, is how we're going to go forward, because, and even the 50% match, this is not a forum for us to discuss that, because there are all kinds of issues, why we might want to do that, or might, or maybe we could not even do it, because we don't have the resources to do that. So, we have to understand this clearly, and then go forward, because we, our needs are still there, and they're not manufactured needs, they're critical needs, and we appreciate all the effort that was done. And certainly of the legislators that supported us and worked hard to try to get our things done, so thank you for that. And I look forward to our individual meetings, and then we probably need a follow-up discussion with the council for what we, what we need to do, and any efforts that any individual ones we need to make to be more active, so that we can get our, at least some of our needs addressed. And we don't like being in a beggar position, but, you know, basically, we did our job, we're financially responsible, and the legislature has to understand that it's time for them to do their job.
Absolutely. And we do have some other things we want to touch on, and as far as go forward too, but yes.
And this may be for another day as well, but obviously, there's a lot of bulk money that's given to the executive branch, different departments, and obviously, there can be a way forward through that. I don't know that's for today, but.
Correct. Absolutely, and that, therein is why DEP is on our list, because Secretary Wallenstein is somebody I think that would really behoove us to have a conversation with. I mentioned that to Carl too. I know DEP's down here in the water now, and we need to have that conversation to carry that forward, because they do have, they do have some monies that we can utilize in that regard. There, there is also the opportunity too, that I have been talking to the chairman of the municipal board in Lee High Acres, who has been reaching out to us, and to Astero too, about having an opportunity for us to come together and have lunch, the three groups, the Lee High Acres, the Astero, the Benita Springs group, they'll notice it, et cetera, they'll host the lunch, to talk about it, there's some things that we can do to work together. I don't think it really is something we shouldn't, I mean, I personally believe that that's an invitation that we should accept, and those who wanted to attend should do that, because if there's some things that we can do together, that would be great, including working with Congressman Rooney, when it comes to some of the emergency management funds and centers and things, because we're, we're kind of a little ways away from where the emergency center is for Lee County, so if there's some things that we need to do there. I've mentioned the Florida Forever, I think that that's something we really have to delve into, because that's land acquisition, so that really fits right into, and I know that Representative Caldwell has, has been our champion over the years, and I know that that's something that he's worked very closely with. So, those are things that I think that we really need to do now, so that we can move forward. So, the invitation is there for us to go to Lee High Acres, if and when you would like to do that.
Can Matt Caldwell be of help to us on the, on the Florida Forever and all that?
Yes, sir. I would believe so, yes. That, yeah, therein, yeah. He's, he's been our champion, gentlemen, ladies, all, all along. He's always been the person who's gotten all of our funding for us, and unfortunately, that was not a possibility this year, which is the same thing that happened with Lee High Acres. They didn't get any appropriation either, just so you know.
And Representative Caldwell will be in town next week, next Wednesday, for a visit in.
I think I saw that.
For a visit in Benita Springs, for any of you that would like to stop by and see him, so, that's great. Counsel, anything else? Carol, Ashley? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we'll be glad to set up those meetings individually, so that, you know, either in person, or however you would like. I think in person sometimes works better, to have an opportunity to talk about some of the little things.
Great.
Great, thank you all.
Thank you very much. Okay. We are.
Mike Gibson.
Let's see. What's next?
Discuss evaluation contract.
Mayor and Councilman.
Deb? Carl? Steve, if you could come forward, please. Councilman Schlacke.
This is just very, believe me, a very small token of our appreciation, doesn't, doesn't even begin to capture it, but on behalf of the City of Benita Springs, presented Stephen Schlacke, District 3, Councilmember, 2010 to 2018, in recognition of his loyalty, leadership, and commitment given to the City of Benita Springs. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Say something, Steve?
No, I'll save it for later.
You'll save it for later. All right. Hang on, Steve, don't move. Now, I took the liberty of doing something a little personal.
Oh, you did?
I did, well, you know, you try to keep it formal, yet personal, right? On behalf of the City of Benita Springs, this is a certificate of appreciation, presented to Councilman Stephen Schlacke, District 3, in recognition of our six years served together on the Benita Springs City Council. At your urging, I ran for city council, and ultimately became mayor, and that never would have happened without your urging. Your dedication to our veterans and the United States of America is unwavering, and a true example of leadership and commitment. Thank you for your dedication and friendship, Steve Coe. And for those of you that don't know, with Steve's background and heritage, his relatives, I probably don't even say it, but Steve Coe is my version of it. Probably Steve Coe, probably something like that. You will be missed, my friend. Signed, Mayor Peter Simmons, March 21st, 2018. Thank you very, very much, friend. Steve, stay put. I think. Gentlemen? Can everybody get in?
What do we get down below, it'd be a better picture?
Steve, I just want to really thank you for your service to the city, and also for making my stay here, even in two years, so pleasant. It was always a, you always had thoughtful things to say, and we appreciate your experience, and we can never thank you enough for all you've done, especially the veterans. I don't know how we're going to replace that.
Steve, same thing. Actually, you encouraged me to run, just like the mayor. I came to your, a couple of your events, and I want to thank you for the encouragement and the wisdom that you bring up on the council. Thank you very much, you're going to be missed.
Ditto, 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 but my friendship with Steve started before I ever got on council, and I think one part of it, I did a lot of talking to him during what I call my year in purgatory, which was when I was on a water task force. But, that's another story. But I talked to him many times then, and he's really a great guy, and I wish I knew him when he was that pilot, at, in the Air Force. He's probably pretty good, I guess.
Yeah. Should have lined him up on the other side of the line at Syracuse. Play ball against him, right?
Steve, thanks for your thoughtfulness, and sort of being a true gentleman every minute of the day. Very much appreciated. And of course, thanks for everything with the veterans.
Stephen, also, thank you. When I was running, you did have some words of encouragement for me. It's been a pleasure serving four years with you up here, and you bring a lot to the table. You're always there for the veterans and our servicemen. And just, I want to say, I appreciate everything you've done, and you've done a great job. You're going to be greatly missed. Thank you.
Thank you for your son, sir.
And, you know, I could go on and on, but, you know, look, we're looking forward here. You don't want to look back, you want to look forward. His years at Syracuse, his years in the military, Syracuse is in the Sweet 16, right? As an underdog, so that's fantastic news. And I know you'll continue to be involved with the veterans, we'll continue to see you, and I certainly, you know, I, there's not enough I can say, as when we first moved to town, and for those of you that don't know, I think some of you know, we moved into Steve's neighborhood in Vanderbilt Lakes, and Steve was running for city council, and I called them to see how I could help, and that's where our friendship started, and I just will never, ever, ever remember you. You brought me over to Rotary, that wasn't my cup of tea, but you got, but you got me involved. You got me involved, you encouraged me, and Steve, I just absolutely cannot say enough. We're going to miss you, sitting here, hour after hour, after we, as we split hairs with each other, and drill down on each other, right, Fred? We're going to miss that. Amy, Peter, right, Greg, Mike, all those drill down sessions, we're going to miss, but we certainly are going to welcome a new member who's in the audience, Councilwoman -elect Laura Carr. Thank you for being here. And congratulations. And to Rick Steinmeier, thank you, Rick. I called Rick last night as well, to thank him for running. And Steve, like I said, we could go on and on and on. Are there members of staff that would like to speak, or say anything, or? No? No, no, no? Chief? Yes?
Please, not staff.
Well, you know. Come on, come on up here, buddy, come on up.
I just wanted to thank Councilman Schlacke for all you've done for this community, specifically not only the veterans, but your immense support for public safety. Although you have always shown me respect and the people who wear ties, I know for a fact that your true concern are the men and women who wear the bulletproof vests, carry the pistols, and the firefighters who put the helmet on, and wear the turnout gear, and go into these dangerous situations. Even though you show us great respect in the leadership positions, you're all, you're always, your focus has always been the soldier carrying the rifle, and those that I mentioned, as far as public safety. And believe me, that does not go unnoticed to all the public servants here in Benita Springs. And you have shown an understanding of what it takes to make this city great by supporting those men and women who do those sort of things. So, I wanted to thank you, sir, and you're a model person, and someone who I look up to very much. So, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Hello? Chief, stay up here, unless you, hang out, buddy, we'll get a picture.
Good morning. Once again, I could have not said it better than the chief. He actually, I believe he stole my speech. But, but he's spot on. You are a true gentleman. It has been a pleasure working with you. As a Benetian, I thank you very much for the hard work that you've done here at the city council, and how well you've represented the City of Benita Springs. But as the chief said, and which is very, very true, we've had a wonderful relationship. Your support, your dedication, professionalism that you've brought throughout has been tremendous. We, as first responders, as you all know, there's a lot of hard work, there's a lot of sacrifice, yet we do it gladly. But when we do have the support of the public, and we have the support of city council, and specifically the support that you've provided us, we truly, truly appreciate that. So, thank you very much for being a gentleman, and God bless.
Bobby, 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 Bobby.
So, just give you a little background about Stephen Schlacke. First of all, I'm a, I know, I'm not going to. That's right. I'm the chairperson for the Veteran Advisory Committee. Councilman Stephen Schlacke introduced me to it, got me on board, and I appreciate that. He showed me what, you know, support of the veterans, and how big it is here in the A little bit about Steve. 23 years, United States Air Force. Councilman Stephen has served on the Veteran Advisory Committee since 2008, approximately two years as a committee member, and the rest of the city's council-appointed representative for a total of 10 years. Councilman Steve has been involved with the following ceremonies: Veterans Day, Memorial Day, 9/11, and Flag Day. Councilman Stephen Schlacke has been involved with several veteran events, the Traveling Tribute Wall, the No One Left Behind Monument, and the Veterans Memorial Brick Walkway. In his own words, Stephen has been quoted saying, "My passion is to continue to serve veterans and disabled individuals in every capacity of Benita Springs." This is our token of appreciation to you, your continued service to veterans of Benita Springs, my friend Stephen.
Anybody else that's in the room, like to say anything, or offer some words? Would you offer some words? Please, come forward. No, please, come on up here. Laura, why don't you join us? Martha, come on up. Okay.
Well, I just want to say, it's been a pleasure to work with you on the Veterans Advisory Committee. I'm, I'm the Community Relations Specialist, for those who don't know, and I graduated two years ago, so I'm totally new to this position, and I just want to thank you for being so patient, so understanding while I'm learning this position, and through my mistakes, you know, you were like, oh, you know, you should do this, you shouldn't do this, this is what you're supposed to do. So, thank you for guiding me, and not being so hard on me, since it is. Thank you.
And certainly starting those meetings right on time to the second, right? Absolutely.
Steve, I remember I first met you when I took you out to Nature Place when we were trying to convince the city to take over Nature Place and you were very helpful and you've been wonderful the whole time. And I'm not sure, did you tell me that Yvonne ranked higher than-
That's correct.
You don't have to remind me.
Uh-huh. That's, uh-huh. Does she order? I know, I know, I helped with the wall. Well, anyway, we are gonna miss you and we are going to be very happy with Linda. One of, at one of the meetings that was going on and on and on, I looked over and I said, "You really wanna get involved in this?" But to all of you, not only Steve, to all of you, thanks for what you do.
She feels like Linda this morning.
I just wanna say thank you from Carol and I for all of your help with us since we've been lobbying for you, you've been so great to work with. And I'll never forget one of our flights to Tallahassee. I was newly pregnant, no one knew, I didn't wanna get on the flight and it was the smoothest flight I've ever had. I was like, hallelujah, cuz I was so scared I was gonna throw up on the plane. So, thank you and you, you're an amazing pilot and I appreciate that. And Carol and I, you've just been a pleasure and we're sorry to see you go cuz yours been such great to work with, so, yes, thank you.
Thank you very much.
I didn't. And for everybody's benefit, I'm glad.
I don't know whether you wanna hear this or not, Steve. I met Steve about, I guess it was about 14 years ago when he was working at the YMCA and he came up to me and he said, "Hi, my name's Steve Solaka. By any chance, you ex-military?" I said, "As a matter of fact, I am." He says, "Well, that's good." He says, "I got some information for you, you might be interested in..." So, anyway, we got to talk and everything and he says, "Oh, by the way, I'm thinking about running for city council." And he said, "Can I, he said to me, 'Can I depend on you for some help?'" I said, "I don't think so, Steve, I'm, I'm in a different district." He said, "That didn't matter." Anyway, several years ago, my dad moved out from Clearwater and my dad was a Pearl Harbor survivor and when he arrived, Steve right away jumped in and took him under his wing and he took him to all these different places, I mean, speech after speech. VFW, American Legion, he went to Hodges University to give a speech. And after every presentation, he would get American flag and said to Steve, he said, "Steve, I have enough American flags to plaster my wall." He says, "You know what would be nice? How about a nice bottle of Scotch?" Lo and behold, the next meeting, they presented Dad, Steve, Steve was responsible for this, they presented Dad with a bottle of Scotch, a gift to Dad. So, Steve, can't thank you enough for all the years of friendship that I've had with you and on behalf of my dad, who is now passed, we thank you for everything that you've done over the years. Appreciate it.
Thank you and certainly, last but not least, or we can go around here if you'd like to, or you don't have to, or just, you know.
Well, Steve, I wanna thank you for reaching out to me and helping me. I put signs on his property in Vanderbilt Lakes. It was very nice of you cuz in Spanish wells, you're not allowed to. And those were the only two that probably lasted cuz I put them in the wrong places and got in trouble. And I apologize, but thank you for your encouragement and your support.
Congratulations to you.
Thank you.
Well, as the first staff liaison to the Veterans Advisory Committee, Stephen has always been a mentor and a true gentleman.
And she's gonna start to cry.
She's gonna cry. Well, Stephen, you and I shared a moment before the meeting, but I just wanna thank you for your leadership and your dedication to the city. We, we share a faith and that's important to us more than anything. And I think it gives us certain perspective on things as well, different perhaps than some others, but I appreciated the opportunity to be able to talk to you about those things and share those things with you. I will tell you that when I, when I applied for this job and I interviewed and I sat in that chair, that after the council made the decision to offer me the position, Stephen was the first one, and in fact, the first council member ever in my entire career to come up and hug me. And that meant a lot to me, especially coming out of Cape Coral, just saying. Congratulations and keep in touch, okay? Great.
Okay.
We're gonna go around the horn now? Absolutely.
I'm gonna tell a different type of anecdotal story. First of all, with council member, former council member Simons here, she'll tell you that when you leave council and term limited out, it's a great thing, but it's also a sad thing because you go from all this great information to leaving things. I'm gonna tell a different story. You found out where I was going for vacation one time and you arranged for my children to get a tour through your son-in-law of the Googleplex. So, the son-in-law was talking to my kids and my kids were young, but, you know, one day, hopefully, college-bound. And he was explaining he went to college and he had a dual degree in computer science and math and out of the mouth of babes, I heard my son say, "You can major in fun stuff?" At which point, which ended up, my son is now in a career that applied mathematics and computer science and he's very happy. And I think you and your family has been a strong influence on my family and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, wonderful. Who else squeeze in for a picture? Or anybody else?
I think Debbie wanted to say something.
Okay. Inadvertently, yes?
Say, "Thank you, Stephen, you've been like a dad to me, I'm gonna miss you greatly and we'll get together and go out for a pierogi's for lunch."
John can do it. Come on, Audrey. Come on, get in here.
Hey, Mayor, did you wanna break the meeting for about, well, 10 minutes? Sure. We've got punch and cake in the other room? Yeah, we've got cake and punch and a bottle of Scotch.
Every time I drive out there, do they move further down the road?